Standing for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks for coming, everybody. First day of spring. Did anyone get their free ice cream cone at Dairy Queen today? You missed out?
Missed out.
I missed it.
So, also I'd like to welcome our new treasurer, Kristi, so...
Thank you.
Yep. Um, let's go into roll call, please.
Sandy Kufel.
Here.
Chris O'Regan.
Here.
Kristi Hilton.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
Joanne Shurkey.
Here.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Okay, all accounted for. I'd like to propose a motion to amend the agenda and to add under 14, discussion of Deputy Treasurer Stypman. Do I have any support?
Support.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
In favor of what?
Of the amendment to the...
Amendment to the agenda?
Yeah. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, it's 14.
14, okay.
Under new business. All right, bills payable. Entertaining a motion for bills payable.
Make a motion to pay bills payable in the amount of $194,201.04.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Any discussion?
Website maintenance.
Is that an annual?
Yes.
Yes, and you know what? I'm gonna call them. I believe every three years, they will give us a free update on our website, and ours is not friendly for phones. And I'm gonna give them a call and see if they will redesign our website, so it will work on smaller...
Is it a smaller version?
Yeah, smaller devices.
Device?
So, glad you brought that up. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shurkey.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufel.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we have public comments. Do we have any public comments? Any public comments? Seeing none. We'll go right into the consent agenda. Will entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented, including minutes, special board meeting of February 27, 2017, the board meeting of March 6, 2017, the special board meeting of March 9, 2017, and all synopsises, synopsises, reports, check reports, February assessing building zoning and DPW report, December through February library board minutes, 2016 planning commission, March parks and rec, the notice from the St. Clair County Road Commission for summer help, communication on 8784 Folker Road, police thank you card, police thank you email, Fragmities Workshop, and request for Assistant Assessor Lawton, Assessor membership, $25.
Support. Okay, a motion and support. Any questions or anything want to be pulled out?
Yes, the notice for the summer help from the St. Clair County Road Commission, if you could drop it down to before your supervisor's report or include it in your supervisor's report, because I think it should be...
Okay.
I think it should be read or made.
Okay, we'll do that.
May I pull out the communications for Folker Road and the police thank yous?
And Folker Road and police thank yous.
Well, if we have a motion and support, can't we discuss them? Do we have to pull them out?
Yeah, you basically do.
You're supposed to, yep.
I'll include them on the supervisor's report. Don't blame me for being too long now.
Have a full 15 minutes.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. All right, supervisor's report. We are going to read a couple thank yous. Uh-oh. This one's upside down. We're sorry, we're trying to do digital for the first time, so we're... Police, Clay Township Police Department, thank you so much for... No, it's on crooked. I gotta read it upside down. Thank you. Thank you so much for this. Thank you so much for watching our home and property. To be able to go on vacation and not have to worry means everything to us. You are very... You are very much appreciated. So, you... And we have another thank you email. Hello, Chief Coach. Want to express our sincere thanks for the extra patrols on Marsh Road. Your officers are doing amazing job at keeping the road safe. There has been a longstanding problem with drivers going too fast on Marsh Road, especially during school hours. Thank you again for serving our community. And then on 8784 Folker Road. This is to the owner of the property. Dear Mr. Badamucci, the property at 8784 Folker Road, owned by the Countryside Holdings LLC, Steven Badamucci, was approved as a machine shop with a sports facility as a lesser use per township planner David Birchler of Clear Zoning. It is now actively being used in that matter and has been approved. Signed, Sid Brown, our building and zoning administrator. And SC for summer help.
St. Clair County Road Commission.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Road Commission, I'm sorry. We are looking for a student, summer help for various maintenance locations. I would appreciate if you would please post and enclose postings in your pass and pass the word. Applications must be submitted, are submitted through the main office or website, SCCRC-roads.org. Please feel to contact me if you have any questions. Thank you. Not signed. That's okay.
From DJO, Human Resources.
That's right. All right, supervisor's report. We are actually doing our road tour, March 30, 9:00 a.m., so if any of you board members want to go on a three-hour tour of the township, we go look at problem areas on our roads and ditches with County Road Commission, and we got the big van, and we'll leave here at 9:00 a.m., March 30. As a result, as a result of the bad windstorm we had a few weeks ago, we actually had 17 calls during that day. It was, I don't know if it was a record or not, but it was, it sure seemed like it. The fire department and police department and our dispatch handled everything very well, including that we had one structured fire on Harson's Island, and I just want to thank God nobody was hurt. Thanks to IRA and Elginac Fire Department for some mutual aid. We did have some issues with DTE and Comcast. Spent a lot of time communicating with them in the past week when we had outages, trying to expedite getting service back and restored. There were some people on Phelps, Holland, or, yeah, a little bit of Holland and Marl Road. They were out like seven, eight days of power. The island was out of Comcast for about eight days also. But then also during that, we kind of got with, I got with George, the new fire chief. We implemented plans establishing some warming centers, and we actually learned a lot from the event, and we're pretty well-prepared, I believe, for something like this. It doesn't happen every day. That's thank God. Last week, if you're going down Ainsworth and got a car wash, we drained the water tank. Was it 250,000 or 200?
200,000.
200,000 gallon tank, and we placed the cathodic system in, inside the tank, and this next week it will be, they'll be putting it online. So, they're gonna come back and do the final hookup, but the tank was drained and all the cathodics are in place. The Board of Reviews met last week. They had 94 appeals in total. There were, the poverty exemptions, I don't know, you know, when I first got into office, it was really crazy. It was a big problem, I thought. We had over 50 poverty exemptions. All of them were 100%. We changed how we handled that, and we're down to three this year, so that's about where it should be. And so, that is all over. We're done with. Assessor's department was very busy, and so is our Board of Reviews. Kudos to them. We are in the middle of talking with IRA about expanding their police coverage. They did pass a millage to pay for added police protection, and had a couple meetings with their supervisor and treasurer, and we're working out details. And once we get them hammered out, we'll be bringing it back to our board for approval about adding some more hours on police coverage for them. Let's see, we did have a court case scheduled for the 15th for blight, and that was postponed to March 22, 1 o'clock. So, that's a couple days. And we do have a couple neighborhoods where there is a considerable amount of blight, and basically, I'll say it's due to lack of enforcement. I mean, there hasn't been any enforcement in these couple neighborhoods since forever. And so, I got with code enforcer Jim, and we thought the best way to attack this is to just canvas the whole neighborhood with flyers and tell them exactly, you know, what the issues are, state the ordinances, and give them amount of time to clean it up themselves. And then, you know, after that, we're going to, I mean, basically, we tell them, we're gonna give you a couple months to correct the situation, not we're going after, after the whole, you know, everybody. So, I'm hoping they take it upon themselves to clean up the area. We're working with the school, actually, to convert some of their tennis courts into pickleball courts. This would be a cooperative thing with Clay Parks and Rec and Elginac Schools. Or actually, potentially, we could have eight pickleball courts over there at the school. So, we're trying to finalize that right now. And let's see. Oh, we did have a, the ferry was closed last night for a while to Harson's Island, and there's a potential for an ice jam tonight. I think we'll be okay, but just want to let everyone know TriHospital has a unit over there with one paramedic stationed over there, you know, during when we were talking to them and requested that, and they said they would do that, and just want to let the board know that that is happening. And let's see. I've been looking at different alternatives for scanning our documents in the office. I have some, an annual, an analysis, a consultant coming in next week. It's gonna give us different options going forward, see what he has to say, which is the best way to do that. We are working on music in the park, booking bands, and we're doing that along with Elginac. Cleanup weekend, Saturday, June 3 on the mainland, and also June 3 and 4 on Harson's Island. We will be having dumpsters available behind the water department on the mainland from 8:00 to 4:00. Also, electronic recycling from 8:00 to 1:00 behind the water department. And on Brownsville, it's Saturday and Sunday all day over there. Upcoming events, we have April 1 Easter egg hunt for the Clay Elginac Library here. Kids' Easter egg hunt, the Pearl Beach Lions, their annual Easter egg hunt. It's April 15, 1:00 to 3:00. Free baskets for all kids. Bunny arrives on the fire truck. Pictures with the Easter bunny, face painting, and game, kids' games. April 29 is the St. John's Marsh Cleanup, 9:00 a.m. It starts at the, they congregated the DNR site, access site, the, what is it? It would be the southeast corner of the marsh. And we do have a Fragmities Workshop, May 13, scheduled from 10:00 to 11:00 at the Township Hall. How'd I do?
Pretty good.
Pretty good. Not bad. Okay.
Pretty good.
Getting better. Moving on. Okay, no unfinished business. New business, discussion on Crispin Drain Project, and they could not make it tonight, so I'll make a motion that we postpone this.
Support.
Okay, you have motion and support. Any discussion?
We're gonna postpone this until the next meeting?
Yes.
Until the next meeting, yes. I did get a call from Mr. and Mrs. Horvath, who asked if we could please move it due to the potential to the ferry closing.
Wanted to clarify.
Yep.
You have support?
Yep.
Yep. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next we have the DPW, the Blue Bill Emergency Repair. I think I sent everybody an email on this. We had a lift station. It's our biggest one in the township.
John, come up with a guess.
Yeah, why don't you do that, John?
Well, it's the Blue Bill Station. It is the biggest one in the township. Not that that matters. They're all important. But the bearing went out on the, on pump number, I believe it was pump number two. So, I called Kennedy. They came out. They took a look at it. The wear plate was worn significantly, and there's, it needed quite a bit of work. So, what they're proposing to do is to basically just rebuild the entire pump that has not had any work done to it since 97. So, Kennedy is the company we always go to in this situation. There's only a couple companies that do this, but they do a good job, so they have the pump. It was, it was kind of an emergency situation. I talked to Artie about it, and we did move forward with it. They anticipate being back either Wednesday or Thursday to reinstall the pump.
It's coming, it's coming Wednesday.
Yes, this, this week.
That supplies?
The whole west end of the township.
Right. Is there any type of inspection on pump number two that they can provide, or is that not possible?
We could pull the pump and look at it. There would be a charge for that, but...
How old, when's the last time that had any repairs?
About the same time, period.
Maybe I'll put that on future discussion. Yeah, well, we, we're probably gonna get our SAW grant funded coming up soon.
And that will help a lot with funding for that type of...
And with that is, we got almost, almost a million dollar grant for, it's a sewer, asset management and wastewater treatment system. It goes through our whole system, and it'll be inspection and be, it's pretty intensive. We...
Yes.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have a million dollars of work on our sewer system. So, and that will encompass looking at all the lift stations. What grant is that again? It was SAW grant. The way it's spelled?
S-A-W.
Okay.
Just like the movie.
Acronym for, not positive.
Sewer something.
Storm management.
It's Stormwater Asset Management and Wastewater. Good.
John, how many pump stations are there?
11.
11? When one goes down, are we able to, do we have the resources to divert from another?
We do have pumps and generators, yes.
Okay. So, operate on an emergency basis?
Yes.
Until we can get a permanent repair?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the DPW emergency repair on Blue Bill for $12,890.
Line item?
Go to line item 590-000930.
Did we, did support?
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion? Oh, okay. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shurkey.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufel.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we have DPW, new hire, utility two work, head slot, I guess, a position, and we're recommending, John is, Dalton Miller.
So, we did some interviewing, narrowed it down to a group of about six people. They all had underground experience. Dalton currently works with Cordis Brothers Excavating, so he has underground experience. Also has some automotive repair experience, and I checked with references and his employer, and they all had good reviews. So, I'm asking the board for authorization to hire Dalton.
I'll make a motion to hire Dalton Miller for DPW Utility Two.
Support.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Dalton, how you doing, Dalton?
Yeah, how are you?
Good. Gotta put you on the hot seat.
He comes with good qualifications, that's for sure.
Yep.
Worked with a shovel a little bit.
And he's not afraid of getting in the hole.
When I talked to his current employer, they did not want to lose him, so that was a good thing.
That's a good thing, yeah.
Any more discussion? All in favor of hiring Dalton Miller, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations, Dalton.
Thank you.
Welcome, Dalton.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, next we have Dangerous Building Extension. This is 9081 Anchor Bay Drive. It was on our Dangerous Building list, and he did get a building permit. It's the old boat house. The owner of the structure called me up. He's asking for a six-week extension. I told him I would bring it before our board. That's where it goes now for extension. And I did drive down here. I was kind of disappointed with the progress that, you know, compared to what he told me, but, you know, I said, well, we'll give him six weeks, myself, give him six weeks of extension. If he doesn't fulfill everything in the permit, we'll go ahead and start the process of tearing it down.
So, if he defaults on the building repairs, who incurs the demo expense?
Well, what we would do is tear it down. Either I put it out for bid, or if, sometimes the water department would do it.
Okay.
And we keep track of the cost, and we'll send them the bill. If they don't pay it, it goes on to their taxes.
Is the owner aware of that?
Yes.
Okay. So, there's incentive to repair it?
Yeah.
A new roof sounds a lot cheaper than...
Well, yeah, and sides and, but, I mean, there's some, some work that needs to be done, and he's gotta make Sid happy.
I haven't been to the project. Is this residential or commercial?
Commercial.
Is it multiple boat units?
Probably about six or eight boat wells. It's, has corrugated aluminum, old corrugated aluminum siding.
Siding?
Yeah.
I would like to really see us stick to the six-week extension and not...
Right.
Keep going and going like we do, like the horse shed is over there on the island.
Well, Sid did say that's not a dangerous structure anymore on the island. I don't want to get off on a tangent, but...
Okay.
So, can you get a motion, or?
I'll make a motion to approve the Dangerous Building Extension for 9081 Anchor Bay Drive.
For six weeks.
Till April 24, 2017?
Yes.
Until April 24, 2017.
I'll support that.
Okay, any more discussion?
So, Artie, has the progress on this building made it so it's not dangerous, on this building? Or is it still, there's still some?
I, that would be a question for Sid. I'm not, you know, I walked in there and I wouldn't put my boat in it. I'll, I'll say that.
Well, when you turn in this permit, you should have a scope.
Yeah.
That accommodates the permit, and the scope should identify what trades are to be done and what work is to be completed, right?
Yep.
So, I guess we can, we can probably check with Sid this week, and, yeah, we'll just encourage the owner to get it resolved.
I'd rather have it in compliance than tear it down.
Absolutely. I'm sure he would do, or she.
Yep. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. All right, next we have a resolution to opt out of the St. Clair County ORV ordinance. Been a little while. They passed, the county passed countywide ORV ordinance. It almost mirrors ours, actually, and they gave the different municipalities the option to opt out, but we had our, our own in place. So, basically, what we're saying is, with this and the next agenda item, we're gonna opt out of the counties and reinstate ours and amend ours, and so if we do write a ticket, the money would stay here instead of going to the sheriffs. And we did put in ours. There was a couple roads we thought were kind of unsafe for them, for the ORV, so we actually included those in the road, in our ordinance, so...
Wait, that five of those roads is M29?
Yeah, that will be the second resolution. We're gonna opt out right now.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 201704, to opt out of operation of off-road vehicle ordinance from St. Clair County.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All, nope, roll call vote.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shurkey.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufel.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we have the amendment to the Clay Township ORV ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 201706, the Off-Road Vehicle Ordinance of Clay Township, amended ordinance number 138.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. The roads that are designated for ORV in this case, is there a certain minimum requirement for side road depth? Not really. That's why I wanted to, right, basically, you can't drive your ORV on any of the M roads, M154, M29. There has been a few deaths on ORVs on Marsh Road, and so we put in there also, it would be excluded for ORVs, Marsh Road north of Jankon. Yeah, understand that area. We did put in there that you can cross these roads. So, I imagine they've been, those road areas have been reviewed for passing. If you got an ORV on there, they can pull off the side of the road or at least pass.
No, the ORVs are not to be on the side of the road. They have to be on the far right of the road itself.
Okay. But I can, I can foresee a case where that's not gonna happen. Okay. And what about signage? ORV signs? No ORV permitted on this road or ORV-designated roads? I don't, I mean, I don't think anyone in the whole county has any, any signage. Well, I'm just throwing out there. Right, yeah. Worthwhile, you know, I'm all about safety. Oh, yeah. If it is a problem, I know we could put some signage. I haven't seen any in the county. Have you, Bill?
Chief says no.
Okay. Right.
Okay.
All right, any more discussion? Do we have?
Yep.
Okay, we're all set. Roll call vote, please.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Brison?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have Resolution 2017-07, name change road for Ainsworth to Muskrat Run. Part of the requirements, I had to get all the property owners to sign a petition stating their for the name change, which we did, and now we have to pass a resolution. And then it'll go before the County Road Commission. And I'm not sure if it goes to the actual, I think it goes to the County Board also. So, but we wanted to change the name Ainsworth to Muskrat Run. And requested some blue and gold signs to be made for it. So...
Is that going to be?
I'll make a motion. You're going to make a motion, or you want me to?
I'm going to make a motion.
Before we discuss it. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-07 to approve the road name change of Ainsworth to Muskrat Run.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion?
Is that, once you've changed the name, is that going to go to the U.S. Postal Service as well?
Yes.
And that's already in place?
Yeah, and then eventually it gets replicated to like all the GPS. It takes a little bit of time. I think for a small period of time, they'll have both signs up.
Okay.
Any more discussion? I see Chris smiling down there.
I'm a muskrat.
I know you are. We're all muskrats.
We live in the swamp.
That's right. Now we got to give him the paint of blue and gold road.
Maybe winning one state championship.
Yeah. It's only a block. All right. Roll call vote, please.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Brison?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
All right. Eighth on our under new business is a report from Fire Commissioner. He's not here, so I'll make a motion, we postpone that.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, Fire Commissioner's report is postponed. Next, we have the Fire Department, the sale of cardiac monitors. These monitors, we bought, oh, how long ago did we buy those? About six, eight months ago? I believe so. It was so we could remain ALS. TriHospital has offered to buy them from us, as you can see in the email. They are willing to give us exactly what we paid for them, $49,700. So that would, money that would go back into the Fire Department's budget. And like I say, I can't imagine anybody else doing that, so I didn't put it out for bid or anything else to anybody else. You know, you could take, buy a brand-new one for the same price, so. But TriHospital told us that they would buy them, and I wanted to take it to the board for your approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the Fire Department, excuse me, sale of the cardiac monitors to TriHospital for $49,700.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion?
I think it's a good thing that they're doing that. It bails us out of $49,700.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, and this was, actually, this kind of surprised us. It was an unbudgeted item when it came up. And so, yeah, I think we're very fortunate, myself. Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Brison?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Motion passes. And next, we have Resolution 2017-08, MABUS Agreement. And...
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-08, MABUS Agreement. If you can have George Rose come up and explain it to us.
All right, come on up, George. Thank you.
Good evening, Chief. Hi. The MABUS Agreement is a mutual aid agreement that is statewide. And what will happen is the state of Michigan is under MABUS. So is several other states in the United States, such as Wisconsin, Illinois, Indiana, and some of the other Midwest states are also fall under this. This is to streamline, it's, the system's designed to streamline your requests and provide emergency and fire service resources across Michigan for day-to-day mutual aid and large-scale events, such as major fires, tornadoes, wildfires, domestic and foreign terrorism, and other events that may overwhelm local jurisdictions and resources. Out of that, St. Clair County decided in October to join MABUS. And they started in October of last year. Out of that, there's only two fire departments in the county that has not signed on with it. And we are one of them. It was started from the fire that they had had up in St. Clair, the, at the electrical plant. They started running out of resources in the county, so they had to tap resources from Macomb County and also Wayne County to assist in combating the fire.
I understand the service is free?
Yes, it is.
It's always good?
And if there's anything to be, you know, recoup by the cost, if it's a FEMA or a state disaster declared, we can recoup some of the resources from that and some funds from that.
Essentially, we would be on file. So like, for instance, that fire in St. Clair with the power plant, they would have been able to call us up knowing what equipment we had and specifically requesting that equipment come up?
Yes. And that's for specific equipment, water?
Personnel.
Personnel. Tankers, if they needed a fireboat or an airboat.
Ladder.
Side-by-sides, we had the gators.
For the complex project.
And to, we're instructed, we have to, we can't make any changes on this resolution. We have to pass it as-is.
Yes.
To be in conformity with everybody else, so.
All but two fire halls in the county have already signed on?
All but two, yes, sir.
You have support?
Yep. Any more discussion?
Is there a reason we didn't join in October?
I'm not sure if it wasn't brought to your attention or brought to the board. I found out about this when I went to the chief's meeting in February.
I don't, I don't ever remember seeing this.
No.
In fact, Port Huron Township's Fire Chief dropped that off a couple of days prior to that, to me.
This is what they were implementing when we went to the MTA.
Okay, I remember them talking about it at a workshop that we were at, yes.
Is there training for your staff on the policies and procedures?
For that?
Yeah.
There will be.
If we pass it?
Yes.
Any more questions or discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Brison?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
I should stay right there, Chief.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have on our agenda, elevate to captain Cody Gordon. Take it away, Chief.
Yes, we had a, our captain, Carl Bailey, had stepped down. So that left a vacancy here at the fire station. And I was asking the other officers if they would be interested in that position. I had two people apply for it and talking with the assistant chief. And we made a decision on Lieutenant Gordon. I'll give you a little background on him. He's been on the department for seven years. He's very knowledgeable of the day-to-day operations. Lieutenant Gordon displays great leadership abilities and has demonstrated to me in my short time as chief of the department. So he's a great, he's a good leader. The men follow him. Some of the education that he has, he's got firefighter one, firefighter two. He's a basic EMT. He has fire officer one, two, and three. And he's very knowledgeable of all the equipment that we have, currently have at the fire station on both, on the mainland and on the island.
Do we have a motion yet? I'll make a motion to promote Cody Gordon to position of captain, Clay Township Fire Department.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Hey, Cody, come on up. Are fish biting in the canals yet? Oh, we didn't, we didn't do it yet. Any questions for Cody? Do we have any questions, other than if the fish are biting in the canals? No? Okay, all in favor of promoting Cody Gordon to, or elevate him to captain's rank, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I think Chief has a badge for him. So, very good. Congratulations. Yes. Okay, next, we put in your packet, wanted to, we've been looking at this for a while. I have a couple of "Welcome to Clay Township" signs. The one, we only have one, actually, is the end of Zobel Court. It's pretty rough at best.
A little worse for wear.
And we've been kicking around different artwork. I kind of suggested which ones I like the best. I have little arrows towards them. And I also, you know, I wanted to say that we're the home of the Algenac Muskrats and "Welcome to Clay Township." And I also wanted some signage on there stating that we're the angling capital for sturgeon fishing. And I'm actually getting some artwork available from Sturgeons for Tomorrow, from them to, so we can add another panel. Yeah, stating that, so. But I don't know, what's your thoughts of the different? Do you like the, for "Welcome to Clay Township," the dark silhouette?
That kind of was along with...
Do you?
What's on our logo out here, doesn't it?
Well, incorporates a tower and a freighter.
The tower, yeah.
Yeah, I like them both there.
And the other one is the freighter, the reefering?
Is that what they sent them? What do you think all the wine drinkers have?
But it doesn't have the colony tower incorporated in it. And then they have the two different styles for the muskrats. So...
Are we going to have any other renderings?
Well, we did, actually, we had about four others, and the previous board narrowed it down to these two. So, I mean, we could start over. I could pull them out or, I mean, we had some, they had, they had ocean freighters on. We wanted a Great Lakes freighter.
Now, where would you put the fish?
Either on top or below, probably below.
Below the muskrats?
Yeah.
It can't go above the muskrat.
No. Well, the fish are underwater.
Well, when you get the artwork back, bring it to us and we'll...
Right, right, but, but as far as these, I'd like to get some feedback because...
Can we get the "Welcome to Clay Township" on the one?
Right.
That we don't like to be like that here, to get rid of the "Welcome" at the top. The sign on the second page says "Welcome to Clay Township."
Yeah.
The first sign just says "to Clay Township," and it has a "Welcome" sign on the top.
Right.
So make the actual sign say "Welcome to Clay Township."
Probably can.
And then the angling can go on the top.
Okay.
Maybe on sign F, the "Welcome to" should all be in one panel.
I think that's what she said.
That's what she was trying to do.
I'm with you, Sandy.
Thanks, Mark.
Which muskrat do you guys like better?
I'm a sign E guy.
Baked.
Yep.
Yep.
I think we're all in agreement of that.
Yep.
And I would instead of letting it hang, I would just make it the same width and bolt it right to the, right to the...
Public sign, eh?
Posts. And where we're going to put these is when you come into, on a dike road where the Zobel Court is, we own a pump station there and, or actually, we do. That's our property. Yeah. And one in the state park, too. In front of the field office, we can put it there.
Good. Do we have a potential manufacturer for this?
Yeah, but what I want to do is get the artwork set up first, and I'll put it out for bids.
Okay.
Okay? There's this company, there's Philip Sign, you know, we'll get three bids.
I like the idea of another panel.
Yeah.
Below the home of the muskrat.
Right.
Home of the Algenac Muskrat panel.
So...
And stationary, yeah, so it's not swinging.
Right.
They could tear it down or something, yeah.
And then, you know, we are going to have some service groups, you know, the Rotary, the Lions, that want their thing there. I think we just put, stick another post in and let them utilize that.
That bid should include material, type of material to remind you of the panels?
Yes, oh, yeah.
In pink?
In pink.
Paint of pink.
They're wooden signs, so. I believe we're going to use cedar wood, but we'll get all that. All right. Thank you for that. Next, we have a discussion for the purchase of property on Point Trumbull. I'd like to go into a closed session. So I'd like to do a short recess from up here and go into a closed session. We can come back out and vote on anything that we decide we want to.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn to a closed session to discuss the property negotiation.
7:50?
At 7:50.
Support.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay. Hey, Hunter, you want to push your poll? We have motion and support to reconvene our meeting at, what is it, 8:07? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
Did you make the motion, Sandy, support?
Yeah.
Yes.
To reopen, reconvene.
So, we had our closed session. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion to purchase the property located at?
Well, you'd have to, you'd have to do the resolution.
Oh.
Just the resolution number with the title there.
I didn't know that. Okay, Resolution 2017-09, acquisition of property located at 4710 Point Trumbull Drive.
No, it's 5244 Point Trumbull.
5244. 5244 Point Trumbull Drive, Clay Township, Michigan. For...
We want it with an inspection of ten days?
Pending, yeah, well, pending, upon, yeah, pending ten day inspection upon acceptance of purchase agreement. For? One one. Okay, well, basically inspection for hazardous material.
Do we need the price?
Need the price?
Yes.
One hundred and eighteen thousand dollars?
Right.
Support.
Okay, we have motion of support for resolution two thousand seventeen oh nine for acquisition of property on five two four four Point Trumbull. And we'll amend the purchase agreement to give us ten days for inspection of hazardous building materials. Everyone clear? And for the purchase price of one hundred and eighteen thousand. Roll call vote, please. Oh, any more discussion?
Can, can we discuss what our potential uses would be for this?
Oh, yeah.
So that the, so the public knows and is aware?
Mm-hmm. Now's the one we do it. You want me to? Huh? Yeah.
Yeah, do you?
Reason, reason we're purchasing this property is, at some point in time, DEQ is gonna tell the township that we're gonna have to address water pressure issues. As we, the township's growing more water taps. And as that happens, it depends on where the new water taps are and how many. You know, we could, it could be three years, it could be five years, it could be next year. The DEQ is gonna say, you have to address water pressure issues. And the most economical way to solve our, our water pressure issues, instead of lift tanks and pumps, is a water tower. Talked to the planners and the township engineers. They both agree that this is the best location in the whole township for a water tower. It's conducive to easy monitoring, cause it's right behind the water department. And it's a more secure location.
Zone correctly?
It's zoned correctly, it's already zone C three. It's not zoned residentially, even though there was a residential home on it. And I myself would have to think for us to put it in a different footprint, by the time we purchase a big enough footprint to have this, we're gonna spend a lot more than one hundred and eighteen thousand for it. Also, there are grants available to build water towers. And if we have the footprint already acquired and ready to go, we have a better chance of receiving grants. I'm not saying we're gonna get a grant, but we're gonna start looking for them. And if, if, if we are able to get a grant and it makes sense, you know, we'll, we'll jump on it. We do have some options this board can look at later. We could do a property split and split along the line of the, of the water department property and just take the back of it and resell the house again, if so choose. We could put another driveway entrance exit from the water department on M twenty-nine, which gives us advantage, especially when the frost laws are on. So there, there are multiple things we can use this property besides the water tower, so. Does that sum it up pretty good?
Thank you.
So we do have support and, our motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes? Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Rigan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, next, we have a discussion on deputy treasurer's stipend. And Anita asked me to bring it to the board. The supervisor is the liaison for, for, you know, our department to the board. So I told her I would. We had a situation where, you know, she's been deputy treasurer for a good year without a treasurer in the township with Tom's absence. And she's been carrying the ball by herself. And then when Tom resigned as treasurer, by law, we, we don't have a deputy treasurer. So there is about, how, how, how long was it, two weeks?
Last one day.
Okay, thirteen days?
Well, it was a working week of three days and a working week of four days.
Okay. So there was a period of time we didn't have a treasurer or deputy treasurer. By law, we really can't pay the deputy treasurer's stipend, cause we don't have a deputy treasurer. But it's felt that this was no fault of her own, that, that her, her pay gets docked. And I did talk to the attorney, he says it's in our right to give her compensation equal to what the, what she would have made in that, that period of time, that gap. And, and, you know, make her paycheck whole, as it would have been. She wasn't actually doing actual deputy treasurer duties, but she was here working hard and, and she's a great employee and she's carried the, I mean, she carried the ball for the whole treasurer department for a good year, so. You know, what's the board feel about? And we're, I think we're talking, I didn't figure out roughly two hundred dollars. So.
Well, the issue is, we're not paying a deputy treasurer's stipend. Outside of that, that would just pertain to her regular wages and we have a union to consider. We can't pay anybody just any amount, similar to when Patty Watson had approached us about wanting a stipend. And we advised her we could not do that because of the union. What we do for one, has to be available as attainment for all of the employees in the union.
Can we pay her overtime versus straight time?
Well, I'm sure we can get a letter from the union negating that. It's not a, it's a one-time deal and we're not making, setting a preference or precedent.
But this is a separate issue, the deputy, she, if I'm, maybe I'm interpreting it wrong, but she was not the deputy for a week, roughly. And her stipend for being the deputy per year is thirty-five hundred dollars, is that correct? So, divided by fifty-two weeks equals sixty-seven, sixty-eight dollars. So, am I interpreting that wrong? That, see, because this is the deputies that we're considering, not her other office things.
And when we didn't have a treasurer, there's no deputy.
Right, and by law.
Kristy could have came in and appointed somebody completely different as a deputy. It may not have necessarily been Anita.
But she did appoint Anita.
Yes.
So it was only a week.
So effective, when Kristy came in and designated that she wanted to reappoint Anita, then she received her deputy pay again, once she was reappointed.
See, I'm, I'm, I'm all for her getting her monies from when she was from the deputy, but I don't wanna see us set a precedent with, you know, some, because there's, there's law, state law involved with the deputy situation. And we're intermingling in it with the, her work as a...
Township.
Township office clerk. So, I mean, that's, that's just the way I take it. I, I believe in doing things properly, according to the law. But it's up to the board.
Right.
So there were no treasury duties done in this time period where that vacancy occurred, correct?
No.
There was?
There should not have been.
I think she, it was, she was reviewing all the financial records for secondary reviews and segregation duties.
She wasn't the deputy treasurer.
But she was still doing secondary reviews.
She came in to sign the checks of our special board meeting from February twenty-seventh, which she was paid for that day.
Mm-hmm.
But outside of that, she was off the whole entire first week and the second week. She couldn't do anything with the tax account, because we couldn't write any checks.
Okay.
So there were no checks written during that time?
No checks written, but...
Just asking.
See, and, and here again, I go back to, Artie, you're in charge of the employees, but her not being the deputy treasurer, you have no jurisdiction, sort of quote-unquote, over that position legally.
Right.
So that's, that's where I'm coming from with this. Not any, you know, that, oh, she did a good job, when, you know, and all. I, I totally understand that, but I'm, I'm one for following.
Oh, I, I am too, but it's a point where it's not her fault that Tom resigned and it took us two weeks. If that didn't happen, there wouldn't be...
But again, and it's nothing against Anita, I'm not saying she did a bad job.
Right.
But there was no understanding that she would get that position back at all. Because theoretically, whoever we brought in could have, could have...
Point is somebody else.
Chosen anybody to take that deputy position.
Right.
So the point is, we can't legally pay deputy pay when we don't have a legal deputy. And we have a problem paying pay outside when we have other people in the same union that aren't afforded the same opportunity to get that extra money.
I would, I would suggest that we could probably get a letter of, from the union recognizing that fact and, and stating that it doesn't set precedent, it's a one-time situation.
And you're gonna what, put two other employees on the spot to say, yeah, we don't care? What's that gonna do for morale in the office?
It would be, you know, their decision too. I don't know, it, 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 it stinks either way. I mean...
I don't know, it stinks, it just has to be done correctly, right?
Correctly.
And, and I don't think this is gonna get resolved tonight. I'd like to make a motion that we do a little more research on this.
Okay.
That we dot our i's, we cross our t's, and we bring this up in two weeks.
Thank you.
In the meantime, that'll give you a chance to talk to the union.
Mm-hmm.
See what we can legally do.
Right.
To keep our office...
Sure.
Happy, content, and the morale good.
And following the law.
But not put ourselves in a position to perform something illegal or immoral.
Right.
Or unjust.
I, I, I can agree with that.
That was my next thing.
So can we just, can we, can we do just a little bit more research? Anita, could you give us a couple more weeks, please, just to make sure we, we do this correctly?
Yes.
And, and...
Yes, I'll support.
We'll bring this up again.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone?
For two weeks.
Yep, and support?
Good.
Okay, any more discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Board member comments. Who should we start with?
Mark. Planning commission was canceled for tomorrow, I mean, Wednesday.
Yeah.
That's all I have, really.
Okay. Joanne?
One, just, you already mentioned something about the McLean thing, so. I'm, I'm just, I know we're in the process of looking toward using iPads or computers up here or scanning our, all our documents, but I, I really wanna be very cautious moving forward with that. And, and it's all, already been mentioned that you're looking into some other ones. And I think that's the way to go, slow down and, you know, do it right. Or explore all the options, I'm all for that.
Ms. Valentine?
I do. I was advised and reminded by our DPW superintendent, John DeBoyer, that the, we will be publishing a notice to the Oaklawn Cemetery lot owners to be advised that all winter decorations, artificial flowers, grave blankets, et cetera, will be removed from the graves in Oaklawn Cemetery beginning the week of April seventh. Well, beginning April seventh, which is a Friday, for the cemetery cleanup.
Can I say one more thing? I always forget.
Of course.
Kristy, welcome.
Thank you.
To the table.
Yes.
Yes.
Sandy?
Mine was just basically to welcome Kristy. And I just wanted to say that as a member of the advisory committee and then attending that special board meeting we had, I think we did a very good job interviewing all the candidates and narrowing it down. And we took our time, we did what we needed to do. And Kristy, you came very highly recommended. You were very highly qualified and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Chris?
Just a reach out to the owner of the property at ninety eighty-one Nekah Bay Drive. This is, blight affects all of our community and this is our community, this is your community. Summer's a very busy season, that's a very busy area. Just gonna encourage you to fulfill your building permit, complete your construction. And for those other property owners with blight issues, I'm gonna encourage that to be self-directed as well. The township doesn't care to get involved unless we have to, and please don't force our hand.
Glad I have compliance and tickets.
Love it.
So, Kristy?
I'm happy to be here. It's an exciting opportunity for me and I look forward to the future.
Great. Well, I'd like to welcome you also.
Thank you.
I look good now between, you know, two pretty girls, so. Had to say it. Everyone, first day of spring, I hope everyone has a great spring and hopefully it will pop soon. And I can't believe we had problems with ice this year with the ferry, but not big problems, just a little inconvenience. Great, that's all I have. And anyone who has anything for the next agenda, let me know.
Motion to adjourn.
Yep.
Support.
Motion, support? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks for coming in.